A whole meeting of the Soias Town Council Monday, May the fifteenth, two thousand seventeen, at nine AM in council chambers. So we will call the meeting to order and introduction of late items. There's nothing, thank you. Could we have a motion, please, to have the agenda adopted? Thank you. Counselor Rhodes, Counselor Youngberg, all in favor. And the first thing that we have on our agenda this morning is a delegation. And this is from BGA Management America. And Mr. Remanko, did you want to say something first and then we will have our delegation speak?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, over the last several months, I've had some discussions with representatives from BGA Management. And they see Soias as a community of opportunity for economic development and growth. And they feel that their initiatives will be very positive for the community. And so they're here today to provide counsel with a brief overview of the concept. We have in the room here today Dallas Morin. And then by electronic means, we have, is it Andrew Harvey?
Andrew Harvey.
Andrew Harvey is in Israel, actually, and I don't know who is with Andrew on the screen right now. So they will be explaining their company and what they do for communities and some of the successes they've had, and seeking counsel's interest in their initiative.
Thank you. So we will ask Dallas Morin, who's the president of Dal Den Global, Inc., to come up and speak to us, and also the people on the screen. Welcome. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, counsel. I wanted to say thank you, first of all, for inviting me over here to speak today, and also to Barry for initiating this meeting. On the screen, like we said, is Andrew Harvey. He's the gentleman that spearheaded this organization and some of the model that we're running with. And he, like I said, is in Israel. He can do the introduction to who's in the room. And first and foremost, I just wanted to let you guys know that I do live in Kelowna. I am in the area. Some of the things that we do work upon is especially with municipalities, towns, and cities. So some of the things that we want to talk about today, it really directly affects Soias, as Barry was saying, with economic development. So I'll turn it over to Andrew so he can continue on the conversation.
Good morning, Andrew. Please go ahead.
Good morning to you. Good evening to us over here. It's seven PM. This is Robit from Alterhood Baloney Law Firm. And she's a lawyer that works on the sister city structures. Robit is Israeli CPA and a lawyer. BGA Law Firm founded a company in the United States called BGA Inclusion, but it was founded by a law firm in order to assist governments, local governments, in reaching out to other local governments in line with the economic development plan of the nation of Israel. So the interests we have, of course, Soias has the border between the United States and Canada, where we believe there's quite a lot of economic development opportunity. Of course, Israel has a lot of technology because the situation for water and power is quite expensive. Water in the present is in the desert difficult and, of course, required for survival. So a lot of what we do is economic development structures and funding for projects. We're not looking at a typical sister city where we're just trying to exchange cultural information. We actually are looking to fund the projects together for what we call mutual benefit between the target city and Israel. Again, there's many cities that would kind of, I would say, benefit from being a partner, especially cities on the border in Israel or cities that are in logistics or in similar industries that could be developed within Soias. So our first phase would invite to extend an opportunity to join a city. There's no cost, there's no payment, there's no obligation. On the contrary, with the sister city, with one of the cities in Israel, there would actually be target projects that could be presented on both sides, fully funded under the city in Israel. The city in Israel will provide it as investment, not as a loan. And that investment would start with grants, grants that include network, streetlights, that save electricity, other technologies that could be quickly implemented to start long-term savings. And that savings can be used to invest in more projects. Also logistics, I know you have an airport, a small municipal airport, I shouldn't say small, but it's a airport that's not in local use. But there's a lot of land and infrastructure that could be used for what we call smart logistics and other projects, and then also funds that can be structured for R and D projects, water projects, smart metering projects. Actually, the technology is quite, list is quite long, and the funding list is quite long. So our initial analysis led us to make a trip there. We came and met in the city. Then we also started presenting the idea with the sister city along with a first gift of the grant of the streetlights in order to start understanding some of the mesh net network capabilities, the energy savings, the smart, what we call smart city technologies that we believe together could benefit not only Soias but also the cities of Israel. That's a general presentation. Any questions anyone has?
Could we, yeah, what my, thank you very much. My first question is, are there any other cities or towns in Canada that you have already partnered with? And where are they? It would be interesting for us to discuss that with them, to see how successful it was or what was involved. Quite frankly, I'm not a businessperson. I'm a retired teacher, but it sounds too good to be true. So I'd like to find out why it doesn't, why it appeals to people, and so I'm sure there may be other questions. Does anybody else have a question about this? Go ahead, please.
Yeah, the good news is you will be the first in Canada. But the bad news is you will be the first in Canada. So that's the good in the bad. We're working with several cities in Canada now, so we expect that those cities will come aboard, we hope they will come aboard one of the, it's kind of a numbers thing, it depends on, again, there are ones in the US. So we have one city, and I believe Gabe is with us, a city called Dodge City in California, I mean, sorry, in Kansas. And Dodge City is in the United States. So we reached out first to the US, and then we reached to Canada at the same time, but we had faster takers from the United States, and it's more aggressive. But on the other side, we also want to, we think it's important to have the Canadian relationships, mainly because the tax rules between Canada and Israel are very clear. A lot of the sovereign government projects that we require to source from G six countries, just because Israel doesn't have a lot of the technology for trains and locomotive, rail, or large-scale equipment, they require this from countries like the United States and Canada. Of course, they can get from Japan and other countries. But the target is really to work through the logistics side especially, because that benefit being on the border allows us to be, we may have storage of things that have to be stored in projects in Canada, and we would very much like the ability to switch when we get a better interest rate or better, for projects in Israel, we'd much rather work with, especially right now, Canada has a very attractive, the Canadian dollars are attractive, the interest rate environment's attractive. So it adds a lot of attraction. So to answer the question, why Canada, that's one of the reasons. The other side is, we really focus on what we call job creation. So Israel has about 7.8 million people, it's pretty small. You can drive across the country literally in two and a half hours, three hours. So it's a small country. The room for growth is quite limited. So of course, Canada has a lot of people and land and opportunity to grow. Israeli companies often don't have the money to market and bring their product. Israeli government may make a technology, and that technology may have really great impact on communications or emerging things, but they need a way to partner with growth for those technologies. And the truth is, a lot of the technologies that have been used in Israel for a long time haven't been adapted, mainly because of the lack of funds and the lack of that mutual ability to understand the market and put it in, especially when we target projects for infrastructure and projects for growing cities, those can be very hard for the Israeli government to put together. So they're utilizing the local governments to make those relationships, put that, and a lot of the funding, like for R and D, is backed by what we call the Office of Chief Scientists of the Nation of Israel. And we can get up to seventy-five percent funding for that. So we structure that, and then we put that through that R and D through. And R and D could mean the development of a logistics technology, of building a logistics center, a smart logistics center. So it doesn't have to be limited to discovering the cure for cancer. There's a lot of other, one of the things we're very interested in is tracking bacteria. I think Dallas could speak more to it, but feed for cattle, if you get bacteria in that, then it spreads and contaminates within farming. So dairy is kind of a hot button between the US and Canada, but we're more interested. Israel is the largest dairy-producing per cow. We produce more milk per cow than any nation in the world. We also recycle eighty percent of our water we use. Canada is about fifteen percent, twelve percent. So we do a lot of savings of water. There's a lot of with that savings, we're able to take the future guaranteed savings and use that for more projects. So the reality is, because Israel's small, it needs a big partner. But we believe it's small, but it's very tasty, right? It may be small, but we have a lot to offer, right? So that's kind of the why. The downside is you will be the first. The upside is you will be the first.
Okay. Thank you very much. Counselor Rhodes.
Thank you, Madam Corof. Well, thank you very much. I'm assuming you can see us as well. Is that a techno, technological?
I'm not sure if you can see anybody.
No, I think I took it off.
Okay.
Yeah.
It disappeared. You didn't hear it before.
Okay. In the introduction email that we got, it says sister city introduction. I would bring up the question about which city you would be talking about. Secondly, this will probably prove to be a fairly short meeting, which you're used to, and I'd be interested in next steps as well, where you'd like to go from here.
Okay. Yeah, the city is targeted, there's about eighteen cities in Israel that are in the program. We try to target the city that has the most in common. Let's get a basic economic analysis of Soias. Now we're looking at matching that with the bumper city. So one city that came up is a city called Bitjann, B-B-I-T, bit, new word, J-A-N-N. We can send you that city. That city has some mutual, I would say, mutual assets that they can roll along. So we want to make sure the cities, if we bring Tel Aviv, there wouldn't be much, or Jerusalem, there wouldn't be much in common as far as projects. And we also want to start with funding. We don't want to, we're not looking to put up a sign, charge a bunch of money, and fly people back and forth. We're looking to do projects and fund those projects with capital, and fund the economic growth between the two cities. So we're looking for projects that you can piggyback, I guess that's the best way to say it, the funding's already there, and you can join in. Like, say if we're already buying fifteen hundred streetlights for the city of Dodge City, we're buying six thousand streetlights with the different eighteen cities. When you put those streetlights together with your city, we get increases of scale. It's kind of like a cooperative. We get bigger buying, we get cheaper. We can't make one dollar on the transaction. So all the profit goes back into the city based on their divided project. The money goes back into your city instead of to some big corporation. So that's the key, is that there's reinvestment of all the profits. Again, the profits, there's no obligation from the city, there's no management contract they have to sign. Every project we bring has to be triple A, and has to have a triple A guaranteed management contract that's fixed and funded without obligation to the city. The lead projects kind of rule, and we suggest, instead of trying to figure out all of the cities and all the complexities, because it does take quite a while, and you're right, and we follow-up meetings, but we suggest we, we say in Hebrew, le'at le'at, slowly, slowly. We start with a sister city, saying, here's your agreement. The agreement we'll see is pretty much, you're not obligated to anything, it's just saying you want to work together for economic development and possible funding, right? Then that becomes what we call the framework to start the funding. Then we start with a grant, so we bring you a present, a gift, if you will, of some technology. We install it, we pay for it, we do it all, then we show you how that technology can save, not only save money, but creates a budget, right, for the city. And then we target the projects the city really wants to do, and we introduce new tools that you may not be aware of, for technology and for investment, that I believe the city, that worth of doing gets a little more complicated. The lawyers get involved in a bigger role, because at first the lawyers will say, what's the risk here? You're getting a gift, you've got to send it to city. BGA is not in the will, it's just, we're facilitating it, but we don't get a fee, we don't get involved, it's just the two cities. So that's kind of the structure, what we recommend.
So just to extend on that.
Yeah, sure.
Because I'm local and I'm on the ground, my role in all of this is to make sure that the process transitions very well for the local economies, right? So some of the projects that we would be targeting, I would be the person that would help you through that process, explain how that all's going to work, and show you the benefit side of things. Like Andrew said, it's going to be a slow process, nothing that we have to rush through, because this is longevity, right? We're looking at twenty, thirty years out, so that we can establish another budget for the town, so you don't have to go out and acquire another loan or acquire any kind of debt, okay? So this is, this is just, it's unconventional, but it's something that we need to bring forward so that everybody can.
I would end real quick. It doesn't mean it takes twenty years to work. In Israel, it moves really quickly. It moves as fast as you want to move. But what I'm saying is, a lot of the projects are twenty years of funding. So it's not like you start a project, and you lose, and then you get it back, and you win again. So when we do projects, they look at long-term relationships, and the fundings we do are long-term, consistent funding. And we're flexible. We want to understand your needs. We may be able to help with projects, and those projects can bring revenues to help you with other growth issues. The city may be growing and needing capital and needing ways to fund outside of tax and outside of things like, one wants to raise tax rate, and one wants to borrow. Those are two things we try to get cities not to do. It's better to have the investment and growth without increasing tax. I don't know if I get an email for that one, but that's our plan, that's what we try to do in Israel.
Okay. Is there anything else that you can add, Dallas, that you tell us about? What kinds of things are you doing in Kelowna right now that have something to do with this?
We've targeted a number of different towns and cities here in British Columbia, especially here in the valley. It's a process, to be honest with you, it's quite a process. So because we've mapped the area and we really had taken a look at what Soias has to offer, that's my number one target right now. Because of your close proximity, as Andrew mentioned, to the border, there's a lot of stuff that we can do logistically, right? The logistic corridor. So there's a lot of benefits that I want to bring, communicating with Andrew of what we can bring for Soias. So, long story short, that's what I'm focusing on, okay? Anything else? I'm looking at, and specific projects. Andrew mentioned about the streetlight project. It gets a little bit sophisticated. I am from the tech industry. However, I am looking at doing some streetlight projects. I know that the town council, in some of the, some of the things that you guys have been monitoring and looking into, streetlights is one of the projects that you guys want to look into. So as Andrew said, I always go back to what Andrew was saying, what we want to do is give you a sample. We want to be able to give you a pilot project that we can monitor, and we can show you how the benefits and how it's going to relate to Soias. Outside of that, we can start looking at, and we're very flexible at looking at other projects that you guys might be interested, as long as it fits inside the realm of the sisters, it's got to be mutually beneficial.
Counselor Campbell.
Thank you, Madam Corof. I just wanted to talk for a moment or ask about being the first, and we say that could be a good thing or a challenging thing. I guess my question is, why we're the first, and how long have you been talking to other cities that you find are matches? Has there been, is it a lack of success in putting those agreements together, or is this just getting off the ground, and Soias is one of the first ones you're approaching?
Yeah, it's a combination of that. We didn't have time to map Canada thoroughly. Economic mapping is all of the role, all of the business, major economic activity of Canada. So the mapping of Canada took quite a bit of work, so we're just finishing that mapping, and as we finished, Soias came up as kind of the, which we were shocked, and we had other ideas that it would be important, but when we started looking at the five freeway coming up on the east coast and the connections, and mapping the border, we have to map all the United States and the arteries of what's there now as far as transportation and logistics. To think of the, these corridors, if you will, these, we have smart corridors, because when we put our smart technology, we're able to track if the containers are equipped with any kind of bacteria or any kind of damage to the, we came up that your location became quite interesting. And that information we just got several months ago. So then I got on a plane and I flew out to Tampa. Second, we did talk to one town that came to us, and we weren't too responsive. I never flew out there, that I never, they didn't come up on our mapping, but they wanted us to invest in them. They heard about it from the United States, from one of the related parties. But because we like to move after we do our planning, we really do the homework, we do our homework because it's much cheaper and it's much more effective and efficient when we do our homework. So kind of an answer to both. We did have someone come to us. We weren't so excited, so we didn't put a lot of assets and resources. But once we targeted who we want in Canada, US is kind of farther ahead. We really wanted Dodge City because thirty percent of all the meat is slaughtered in the United States in Dodge City. Quite a big OK Corral right there with all the cowboys, that's a really big meat processing unit, amazing technology for logistics and smart logistics, and we believe that will be one of the biggest assets. Even if Donald Trump takes the direction of taxing, that means that there will be a huge demand for border storage, and we believe you could be on the verge of an avalanche of demand. And that demand would come a lot from the nation of Israel, believe it or not. So we're looking at new areas, saying we would like to invest and put money into logistics, smart storage, smart streetlights, smart cities, smart roads, and security, and all kinds of things that could be used. That gives extra funds for the city to take care of, again, their growth issues that they have with, you know, anything they have to pay to the central government or the regional government, issues, because as you grow, you get these extra bills that Canada can provide. So we want to help the city have that cash flow and have that growth. So we're not promising to be elixir and magic, but I guarantee Israel will shock you. It will, it shocked me. I lived here for five years in Tel Aviv, it shocks me every day. They're just amazing people. And I think that the amazing people of Soias, but the amazing people of Israel, I hope, are amazing in Israel. I think it's a good, especially to like funding. It's a good combination.
Good. Thank you. Anybody else? Oh, Counselor Youngberg. And then I wondered if any of the directors had any questions, because we have all our directors here, so go ahead, Counselor Youngberg.
I just have to really, I just really have to ask.
What's in it for you?
Good question. Again, go ahead. You have more?
No, just that one question, because, you know, people don't come and offer us money very often for the infrastructure and not require a payback system. I just am familiar with one situation in Mexico where the China government came in and built a road, and they owned that road. And so they want it back now after they haven't been paid for fifteen years. So there's just some huge controversy down there over that issue. And so I see this as being somewhat of a similar situation. You put all our streetlights in, or you help us with our airport with fencing and lighting and things like that, and all of a sudden, there's an underlying covenant or some type of restriction on our land as a result of your investment. That's the reason for my question. Any answers?
It sounds like he's not on, yeah.
Oh.
Is there something you can answer?
Yeah, I mean, again, Andrew's, he's the, he'll be able to answer that in a little bit more detail. But the end of the day, what's in it for us is that we're allowing the communities in order to facilitate some of the projects that are going to be. So it's a government-to-government. It isn't privately, it's not a privately, a private company or a private entity that's going to be giving you the money. It's a government-to-government for mutual benefit of each governments. So in that process, which Andrew can talk a little bit more about, that's where we can start detailing a little bit how that affects you guys and where we come into play, okay? So because Andrew's a little bit more of our finance director and our structured risk manager, I'm going to have to let him talk a little bit more about that, just because of the knowledge. I'm more, as I said earlier, I'm more technically based. I look at the projects, project management, and so on and so forth. So we'll, please, is on?
Yeah, this is Gabe Stanmeyer.
Okay.
If Gabe's not available, maybe I can help him answer that question.
So Gabe, just give me one second. So Gabe Stanmeyer is also an integrator. He was the one that was representing Dodge City down in the United States Andrew brought up. So Gabe has been with the organization a little bit longer than I have, so he's got a little bit more experience. Go ahead, Gabe.
Thank you, Dallas. So really, the benefit that Israel gets from this relationship comes back to how, when we were speaking about the size of the country and the people in the country, and the technologies that are being developed there, but there's not room to grow. A lot of these very innovative technologies have come out of necessity of development for Israel, whether it be the smart logistics or the water treatment process technology. And so in order for Israeli technologies to really be implemented on a larger scale, we need a partner in North America, whether it be the United States or Canada, for them to bring these technologies and implement them and commercialize them into a global technology and a global product. And so that's where a lot of the investment from Israel would go towards the technology and identifying partners in North America for those technologies to be commercialized. And that's really where the benefit to Israel comes from. It's not a situation where Israeli group would own the road or own the streetlights. All the projects that we would be bringing to Soias, any project that is in Soias, would be owned by the city, and there would be no ownership issues from the Israeli investment. The Israeli group would bring the financing for it, but any, any project that required a payback, anything like that, would come from the revenue of the project itself. And that's why the projects are structured in that way, to facilitate those needs. So Andrew can kind of jump back, I see that he has returned.
All right.
Andrew, if you can talk a little more about the quality. If you have it.
Yeah, so the cities, the, there is a mutual economic development. We can't do a project that isn't mutually beneficial in both the cities. Typically, the city will get training, and they'll get, like we talked about the streetlights, they get cheaper streetlights when we order more. But there's a, there's a natural benefit from having, almost like a cooperative, right? They're able to sell more or buy more. You need to. You need to buy cheaper things when cities get together to buy, so that's a real natural winner right there. Second is, there's, there's a guarantee on performance on these technologies, so that guarantees savings. Say you had savings of 20% or 50% over 20 years, those savings can be financed and insured. And Israel has been given through the OECD, has been given a lot of support for environmental products and products that have, so they give up to 18 years at very low interest rates. So they want to invest that money back into cities, and cities that mutually benefit their targets, then what happens is there's grants which you don't have to pay back, and then there's projects that you do have to pay back, but you pay back at the cost of repayment is lower than, it has to be lower than the cost of borrowing of the Canadian government. So, so it's not a loan, it's just the project makes enough, the first payback is that cost of funds of the Canadian government. So say the Canadian government's borrowing at 28%, then the project would pay 28% repayment of the, of the, of the investments. But remember, it's an investment and there's no liability at the city, meaning the city doesn't, if the project pays, not the city, okay? So a lot of these projects are what we call revenue generating, like revenue bonds. This is like an investment into a revenue bond. A revenue bond is borrowing, but this is an investment with a maximum return of less than the government's borrowing rate. Because it's a key to G, what we call a government-to-government investment, so there's no private sector trying to make huge returns, right? So some programs are grants and some programs are highly subsidized investments, and the investment has to have mutual benefit.
Okay, thank you. Director Cunningham has a question.
Oh, hi. The technology transfer potential sounds very interesting, but I would also like to ask you about another economic development prospect, and a considerable interest seems to be put by your team on the fact that we're at the border, we're on a transportation corridor. There's been talk over the years that in fact we could have an entrepôt at the border to exploit our situation here. There was some mention about a free trade zone, and I know that they have such creatures in the United States. Can you actually have a free trade zone in Canada?
Yeah, you're working with the Canadian government. I'm looking at a letter to the Canadian government right now, only Israeli rail authority. So the Israeli rail would be writing to the, and targeting Assayas, targeting your city. So I don't want to say that it's guaranteed, but typically we set up many free trade zones with the government of Israel, within Israel and abroad. So this is kind of what the law office and the government of Israel and the rail authority. We have a border with Jordan and with all of the problems with Syria. There's been problem with goods coming in. Israel has built a rail that goes all the way to the border of Jordan, and we're able to bring oil one way and food the other way. We would love those products to come from Canada and be part of a free trade zone. We believe the best part place for that in the West is your city. That sounds kind of amazing and too much, but we're not trying to say that that's for sure going to happen, but according to our enactment, that was our, towards the rail authority. Remember, legally, law firm represents the rail authority in Israel, or the rail company in Israel. And the rail company in Israel is very interested in sharing and working on free trade zones all over the world, and also with their free trade zone, and that would be something your sovereign government would do, so we're working with the sovereign government of Canada again, but it comes down to where's the land and who are the local beneficiaries of that investment. So, I know that sounds kind of crazy, but governments are always looking at ways to increase trade, and free trade zones could be extremely, so we would, if we worked on a sister city with you and that became something of success, we would definitely go across the border. We're not trying to be steeple business, but we'd go across the border to, is it Oliver? Is any of this?
Orville.
Orville, sorry, Orville, sorry. Orville, and Orville would also, would be a true target, because a free trade zone with those two cities could be means for economic development for both cities. So we don't see it as, hey, let's grab and let's take the IP. We have an IP where we can identify a bacteria. 99.99, it was developed for the French military to be anthrax, and it was picked up by the Israeli government to identify bacteria, TAD, cryptosporidium, all kinds of nasty little bugs, but right now there's nothing that's portable that can identify a bacteria in one hour. So this is a military technology that we need to help to fund and put together for the government, and then we're sharing it with, I mean, it's great to find anthrax, but you're probably not going to find anthrax in your food. You want to find, you know, TAD, cryptosporidium, these kind of things are nasty, E. coli. But if you could say, really, only path into Canada that has the ability to guarantee, we have a AAA guarantee that no meat, no dairy, nothing has E. coli. You don't have to wait two to seven days, which we, we tell you in one hour, and we finance it because now we know it's good. Art of trade is really knowing what you're getting, okay? So that technology, you say, why would we deal with Canada? It's really important. Israel, we use it now in Israel, but it's, Israel's very small, right? So it's Katanin. It's more for small than Hebrew Katanin. We need the world, which is big. We need more people so we can identify things that could harm supply chains. So we call it a secure supply chain, and that's really interesting. Your, your region is what we call a gateway or doorway into a very large market and also into the US market. Your biggest asset is you're happily located, it's the largest buyer in the world, right? In the United States, which are also very smart, very educated. Canada has a lot, US is not the only market in the world. Actually, Canada has a lot to contribute to, and equally to the development of Israel.
Thank you very much, and I'm just wondering if there's any other questions, because we do have some other things on the agenda, and we could certainly, if need be, set up another meeting. Is there anyone else that would like, okay.
I just think you should be setting a research center up here in Assayas, because you seem to have quite a little bit of interest in all of the movement of bacteria, and we have a muscle problem in Canada that we would like you to look at, too.
We'd like that dealt with first.
That's sure, we can structure the funding for that. That's R and B, and that comes on 100% subsidized, and you guys are very close to a nice university. And all the time is getting, but you guys are really in a, I would say, in a very good place, eh?
Eh, thank you. Thank you very much, Dallas.
I appreciate your time. So on that note, I'm not sure which one of the counselors has mentioned it, but I would like to communicate a little bit more with Barry and sit down and maybe even with some of the council members and talk a little bit more about this.
Absolutely. What we could do is ask Mr. Remanko and the directors to, to, you know, discuss this, perhaps come back with a report.
Well, I guess what I'm looking for is some type of administrative resolution to enable me to continue discussions with this group. As you know, if, if there's a number of things in our business plan, and if council feels that this is something we should continue to explore, I will continue to explore it. If not, it'll fall off the table, so if there's support for council to continue discussions, just provide me that direction.
Is there anyone that would like to, Counselor Youngberg?
I'd just like to make a suggestion that we take this encounter and maybe have a discussion with the directors and ourselves before we make a resolution.
I'm not sure whether we can do that, can we? Take it, we, I don't, I think what we'd have to do is allow Mr. Remanko to deal with, with the directors and perhaps come back with a suggestion or a way to continue, if that was the wish of council.
I'll move that administration continues conversations to gather more information to bring back to council at a later date.
Okay. And that seconded? Is that all right?
That's what I'm looking for.
That's what you're looking for? All in favor? Thank you very much, and thank you for coming today.
Thank you very much, Gabe.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for joining us. Okay, next on our agenda is Mr. Dinwoodie, request for proposals to repair the town hall roof.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. For the past several years, the roof of the town of Assayas Town Hall has experienced numerous problems with water leaking into the building, in particular in the front entrance area. Several roofing contractors have been hired to remedy this situation with very limited success. The roof of Town Hall is made up of several different sections, all with different pitches, which make it extremely difficult to determine exactly where the water is leaking into the building. Since patching the roof has proven to be ineffective, it is recommended that the entire roof structure be removed and replaced. So an overview of the project would be as follows. It would be the removal and disposal of the existing Town Hall roof tiles, which is approximately 6,300 square feet. Inspect all roof structure supports and replace if necessary. Remove existing insulation and replace with new insulation with an R50 value minimum. Remediate any mold discovered during the inspection process. Eliminate the flat roof area over Town Hall front entrance and replace with a roof matching the pitch of the main building. Remove and dispose the, and replace the existing roof tiles on the pergola building just outside of Town Hall, that's about 200 square feet. Remove and replace the existing eaves troughs on Town Hall and install a new roof, either metal roof or tile option, it'd be the contractor's choice, subject to the approval of new roofing material by the town's planning and development department, and there's an entire RFP if you want to take a look for more details. The general appearance of Town Hall has been negatively affected as a result of the continuing water damage. The health of staff in the building is also a concern with the possible presence of mold in the building. Options before council, if council instruct Operational Services Department to issue this request for proposals, evaluate the submitted proposals and provide council with a recommendation for further action. Option number two is that council instruct Operational Services to not issue this request for proposal, and option number three is that council request additional information prior to making the decision. The administration recommends council adopt option number one.
Thank you very much. This is sort of an unusual thing that we've had to deal with. Do we have any idea what the, what the amount of money is that we're looking at, or is that depend on what they come back and?
Well, because it's a request for proposals, like I said, it's really, really hard to tell how much damage there is up there until you actually take the roof off and see what there is to see. So that's why we're asking for proposals. We have a budget for the project, but when the request for proposals come back with some numbers, then we'd have a more accurate idea of what it's actually going to cost.
So do we not have an amount for, to hire somebody, a request for proposal? Do we have to set that up first? How much?
Well, a request for proposal will bring a, will see what level of interest is for the contractors to do that and some potential costing.
They will come back with the money.
The process here today, this is being brought to council to ensure that our request for proposals is something that council is aware of and supportive, because we do have a budget and amount, and we want to ensure that we're going in the right direction. This potentially could also tie into that, the overall building assessment that we're going to do, if we have contractors that come out and take a look at the roof, and that's probably a big portion of what it is. You know, we want to deal with the leaks, but we want to deal with them in such a manner to see what the cost effectiveness is.
Okay. Did you have a question?
It wasn't a question, I was going to move option number one.
Oh, all right. Moving option number one, are you seconding that? And did you want to speak to it? Okay, go ahead. Counselor Rhodes?
So you're looking for a motion from the committee of the whole meeting?
Well, this is administrative proactive, basically supporting the RFP. It's not spending money, and it's basically saying to the administration, push this RFP out.
Okay. Can I ask what the budget is?
$100,000.
Does that include, sorry, CJ, does that include the 30 that we, no, it doesn't, that there was the 30 that we suggested would be extra?
That's the budget that was received for second and third reading, that was the dollar figure.
Okay.
So about four or five years ago, or maybe a bit longer, we did kind of resurface the roof here, and it was $18,000 to just kind of repair that. I don't even know what it was, there was some damage, we repaired it, it was $18,000. So I can see it as bumping up to the $100,000, or maybe even far exceeding that if there's damage below the surface and that kind of thing.
Could be.
And just another ridiculous comment, there is a big push right now for those solar tiles that you can get. I think Tesla is mass marketing those things right now.
That's an option, like I said, if whoever wants to bid on this, if they want to put that forth as an option, we could certainly look at it.
I didn't actually read through the RFP, but could we perhaps maybe even put that in there to see if there might be, because that has a whole bunch of cascading benefits, you know, with buying and selling those energy things and that kind of thing, you know?
We could, yeah.
So it would just be adding it into the terms of reference?
Yeah, just adding it to their.
Yeah, adding it as an option, like, because right now we have an option for a metal roof, we have an option for the same kind of tile roof that we have, we could certainly add another option to say if you wanted those.
Do you need that as a friendly amendment, or is that just direction we can just give?
No, that's just something we would, that's why, that's why we brought it to council, to see if there was any additional recommendations and whether there was support for it and, you know.
Typically, if something is that new, it's going to be really, really expensive, but...
Well, that was part of the reason why I was asking, I spent a couple hours this weekend just kind of reading about it, and all of the comments and everything that they have about it include everything you'd ever want to know, except what the cost is of it. You know, it might be, it might be a good thing to, because we don't know. There could be more benefits from an energy point of view within this building, you know, there could be a payback, which you would never get from an asphalt or a tile type or metal roof.
Sure, we could certainly add it as an option.
I think that's a good idea.
And then they can bid on it or not.
Sure.
Yeah, that's right.
Something to look at. Okay, any other questions about this? So the, we have recommended that we go with option one to do an RFP. All in favor? Thank you very much.
Thanks.
And next is the boat trailer parking.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. Staff received correspondence in relation to a leaseholder at the Desert Sunrise Marina requesting boat trailer parking. A leaseholder at the Desert Sunrise Marina is requesting use of the boat trailer parking lot and is currently on a waitlist to get into a storage area, but currently has no place to store his trailer. He has a pontoon boat, which is more than 24 feet long, and is requesting use of the boat trailer parking lot. He is willing to pay a fair price for a long-term permit. In our current regulations, residents are not permitted to park in the boat trailer lot and are directed to find storage facilities for long-term parking. In the height of the summer season, the lot is at times very full. Staff is not sure if the lot has ever reached capacity. The boat trailer parking regulations are attached. Terms of options, option number one, status quo, do not allow this type of request for local people who have a lease at the marina. Option number two, allow short-term parking for local marina leaseholders who are waiting for a storage facility, subject to a letter indicating they're on a waitlist, which would be subject to a council-approved fee. Option number three, allow long-term parking for local marina leaseholders who are currently waiting for a storage facility, subject to a letter indicating that they are on a waitlist, again, subject to a council-approved fee. And option number four, allow parking for local marina leaseholders who are waiting for a storage facility, subject to a letter indicating they're on a waitlist only if space is available. If the lot becomes full, they will have to remove the trailer ASAP, and again, subject to a council-approved fee. For information, the staff is looking for direction. The town has 16 slips at the marina and Watermark has 16 slips. Most of the slipholders for Watermark may use the boat trailer parking, especially if they are short-term users. If all slipowners use the boat trailer parking, it may compromise the tourist or visitor experience. Visitors who utilize our hotels and motels and pay the 2% tax may not be too happy if the service is not available due to lack of space.
Thank you very much. Yeah, this is a tricky issue, isn't it?
If I could, if I could just add some clarity as well, again, we're providing a specific service level within our, you know, within our mandate right now. The direction that comes out of this basically would be whether or not council wants to consider changing our service level. If you're going to change your service level, it has to go to a regular council meeting. So an opportunity to discuss this particular matter and whether or not you want to see it go to a council meeting, or we stay with the status quo.
Okay, yes. Counselor Campbell.
Yeah, I'd like, I'd like option number one, that we stay with the status quo. I think we need to understand how that was paid for and who collected the funds that helped pay for it, one. But two, this, when we talk about, if you read further down into the... But two, this, when we talk about, if you read further down into the, um, the information and direction requested there, this becomes something else for the, the town staff to manage, um, and adds, adds more complexity to, to something that, that operates fairly easily right now by looking at how full, uh, the lot becomes, and whether people have to remove things. It becomes another moving part, and, and, uh, I'd like to see this data status quo.
Councilor Rhodes?
Just for clarity, and, uh, I feel like I'm asking all kinds of ridiculous questions today. You're talking about the boat, or the trailer storage yard on, on the highway, right on Main Street? Not the parking lot by the marina?
That is correct, yes.
Yeah. Last year, we, uh, I'm not even sure if we opened up the second lot.
Oh, yes, we did.
Yeah, we did last year. But it must have been just a temporary thing, because I know the, because I drive by there every day, I often stop and count trailers. It was way down over the past three or four years, the actual volume of trailers that are in there. And, you know, this might be a good opportunity. I mean, I'm assuming as a local person, I guess.
Yes.
Yeah. Um, and I know it's a trailer parking lot, but, I mean, it looks like it's temporary. If we were able to get a letter from, you know, whoever he's waiting for the permanent storage yard, it might be kind of a good thing to accommodate this individual. I know it's one of those situations where if you do it for them, you got to do it for everybody, uh, but maybe not everybody is in the same position.
Yeah. Well, I, I, my sense is that if we, if, uh, if we do it potentially for any of our sixteen, then Watermark will probably want it for their, potentially, they have, I think we've given them the ability to rent probably twelve or, uh, ten, ten of their slips. So there may be ten requests from there, so, uh, again, uh, it's, it's whether or not you want to change the service level, and, uh, and, uh, that, that would be, uh, the direction we're looking for.
And is this, that trailer parking is funded by RMI funding, isn't it?
That's right.
So we have to take that into consideration as well, I think. Yes? Councilor Rhodes?
The Watermark portion of sixteen slips there, in my mind, they would park their boats in there, right? So they may have a trailer left over, which they could use the lot, right?
Only for two weeks?
Uh, if, if they're just a visitor, uh, they can actually use that, because that would be no different than anybody else putting their boat in the water.
Yeah. But would not all Watermark people that are using the marina be visitors?
Possibly.
And stay in that Watermark?
Well, not necessarily, no. There's ownership involved there, too.
Well, there's, there's, there's ten, I think ten stalls that we allow them to rent, uh, on a, on a, on a monthly basis. So they can be, and, and they're, are seasonal basis. So those can be locals, or they, and, uh, again, they may, if they don't want to keep their trailer at home, or, or they don't have space for it, they would be potentially looking for the same benefit.
Hmm. Have we heard this hap, sorry, CJ, go ahead.
Um, I'm not sure if there was a motion put on the floor, or?
Yeah, there was.
Yes, there was.
To go with option one.
Yeah. No, I did not second it, no.
Nobody has seconded the motion, which, which we should probably deal with that first.
I thought that's what...
I thought your hand up was to seconding it as well, I'm sorry. So the motion was for option one, is there a seconder?
Yeah, I'll second it.
Okay. So now, go ahead. Did you have, yeah?
Yeah. So I would speak against the motion. I, I think it would be well within our mandate to help out a local person, and, uh, and, you know, I see this as being very temporary. Uh, if his, uh, purpose is to seek permanent storage for it, and he's actually had, can get a letter like it suggested, uh, I don't see any problem with helping him out on a temporary basis. I mean, those lots right now, as we sit here, are basically empty right now. There's a few in there, but...
Yes.
Thank you. So a couple of things, and I, I use this example a lot when we're making decisions that are, that are based on one-offs, or, um, things of that nature, and, and my concern is always that we open a can of worms, and, and we blur a line. Um, right now, that project was paid for through the RMI funding, which was collected by the, the hotels and resorts, or the accommodators here. Now, um, I kind of wish Kelly was still in the room to hear this part, but, you know, getting the buy-in from the hoteliers on the two percent initially was a challenge. Getting it on the three percent has, has proven to be a bigger challenge. Um, why? Because there's, they need a clear understanding of the benefits, uh, for the resorts collecting additional money. This is a project that I think was a really good one, uh, for the town to utilize that RMI money for. And for me, I think it's important that we, we have some sort of separation in, in the types of projects, um, that we put forward. So, you know, to, to look at somebody who's waiting, um, for permanent storage, and, and to grant, uh, whether it's a waiver, or however we want to deal with it, um, it, it's an inch and a mile scenario where the next person and the next ten people are waiting for a similar situation, which could take longer, and, and then a, a large portion of that area becomes utilized for long-term storage. That, that's my concern, is where the, where it leads to.
Okay. Did you have something, Mr. Remanko?
No, I just, if, uh, depending on how the direction goes here, uh, the direction is whether, you know, you want to report back to regular council meeting, uh, that would outline options for retaining the status quo. Basically, all those options, but we're looking to see whether or not there's an interest to bring this to a regular council meeting.
Councilor Youngberg?
Uh, yes. Would that letter that is required, would that go to Community Services, or would it be administered by the town office?
Uh, we'd actually deal with the, the marina at its full capacity, so it would, it would come to us.
Yes, so if we were to suggest that he could use it temporarily, subject to the letter being submitted, you would monitor that letter at Community Services?
Yeah.
And then we would ask, okay, what is, uh, again, you're changing the level of service, so we would, we would, this would be, uh, something we would come and set up as, uh, service being offered to everybody else. We would be asking for clarification from council in terms of what the fee would be. We'd also be asking for a time limit, or a time, uh, that would be acceptable to council to, that would establish the fee as well.
Yeah. Okay. CJ, then you. CJ?
Um, is that necessary? Alls we're doing is helping out a local person for a temporary period of time, I mean...
My, my sense is that as soon as you open the gate, it's, it's, the, the other requests will come. Other requests will be one-offs, there'll be this, there'll be, you know, that, we, we have a number of different, uh, demands on, on the trailer, on that trailer storage area, and, uh, again, this was a formal request, so that, and that we have no service level for. So we would have to, my recommendation is that we would set up a whole service level or in and around it, so everybody is treated fairly, and so that every one-off wouldn't have to be brought back to council.
Right.
For, for the sake of arguing with, with Councilor Rhodes, because I don't get to do it very often, um, if this was a, a one-off scenario we were discussing, and it could be set up that way, I, I wouldn't have made the, the motion that I made. My understanding from the report when, before I made the motion, was that we were changing the level of service to accommodate one request, and I would ask, uh, if this has been the only request we've received, um, that sounds like an awful lot of work for administration and for your department to accommodate, uh, one request. So I agree, Councilor Rhodes, I, I think if we could help a, a resident out in a situation that, um, doesn't, uh, hurt anybody else, that, that we would always love to do that, but my concern is changing the level of service to accommodate it.
And, and right now, we don't have a fee for service for this. We have a, would probably be a, a daily parking rate that they would not, probably not want to pay.
Yeah. Councilor Youngberg?
A question to Councilor Campbell. Where do they, where should he park his trailer now, if he were in a position where he had no space?
So I think there's storage facilities that are still used, and if my understanding is they're full, um, you know, that, that's how the, the private sector works. If there's an opportunity for people to open more businesses for, for storage, trailer parking, because of demands there, um, I, I think that's what needs to happen, but we certain, certainly looks like driving through the industrial areas that there are storage places available. I don't know if this is an issue of cost, or if they're at maximum capacity. I don't know enough about what this person has tried to do, uh, leading up to this request.
Could I also add that, um, my neighbors, I hate to say this, but they have a storage facility for several of their things down in Oroville. Um, yeah, that isn't, that isn't your first choice, but there are storage facilities in Oliver and in Oroville as well. So there, I think there are places, um, if you, if you look. This would be convenient. Um, I get it, why, that this would be a convenient thing, but...
Changing the purpose of, of why we put that project together is my concern.
Would we have to go back and look at our, our RMI rules and see? No, we, we could do what we like.
This is, this is, we, we have a, a set of operating rules for the, uh, the trailer storage area now. This would just be another one that would be added to it, because, again, I, I go back to, uh, it, one-offs, uh, are, become multiple one-offs as soon as the, it hears, so that's why I'm saying if, if you're going to do it for one, council considers changing the, the whole process.
I got it.
And, and the question about where people store their boat trailers, is that the, the answer, we, you know, we basically saying is that when you have an asset like a boat, you should be preparing to deal with all the asset. And, and so that, and should not be looking to...
Look at all of those. Okay, so the, the, uh, motion here is to go with opt, the option one, which is to stay the status quo. Should we take a vote on that first? Do you want, go ahead, Councilor Rhodes?
Um, so, um, I don't even know what to call this, kind of like a paradox right now. If, uh, so I would intend to vote against it, uh, for the reasons that I stated. Uh, what do you do next? You phone them up, say, too bad, is that the...
That's right. We just say that council's not willing to, uh, council did not support changing our service levels to the, uh, to the trailer storage area.
And if the motion is defeated, and we put another motion on the floor to grant him his request, then that just triggers a whole rewrite of the whole...
Yeah, and the motion on the floor would be to, to bring, uh, a report to council, restructuring the service level at the trailer. So we would not, I would not ask council to make a motion to grant this one individual this.
But we could.
But you could. Well, you're changing service level to, so I'd ask that it goes to regular council meeting, then.
That's why I made the comment that it triggers a whole, uh, basically a volcano of stuff that would have, have to happen from then on.
Do we have any more? Is this a, an issue of convenience, or is there nowhere, no other alternatives, no other options?
Yeah. All, all I know is that this person has tried to get into a storage facility and is waiting to, to get in.
Right. So it might be the, the, the second call that was made before even looking at the option.
This, this person has actually been part of, or been using our marina since its inception, so I'm not sure what they were doing prior, uh, or if there was an issue parking, and he always got something, and this was just the one-off for him to get that storage. But that's, that's what's happened, so...
Okay, so, um, we have a motion on the floor to, uh, to support the status quo. Um, I think we should take a, a vote on that first. All in favor? Against? So that means it's defeated?
Yeah.
Yes. All right, so, um, is there someone else who would like to make another motion?
Go ahead, CJ.
Um, I'm at a loss for words. I don't, uh...
Uh, well, if I could, can I make a suggestion?
Yes.
Uh, then, to me, the, the other motion would be to bring it to the meeting this afternoon to, uh, to make a discuss, uh, a decision on the, uh, on, on the, uh, discussion of changing the service levels for the, uh, the boat trailer parking area.
I think it would, it's, understand that it's black and white. People are, it seems at the table here, we're looking for a third option that doesn't exist. Um, and that's not what I'm hearing. I'm hearing is, always, by defeating this motion, uh, the only other motion to move anything forward would be to bring this to the regular council meeting and discuss changing the service level, and opening up the door that...
Or, or I guess the other motion would be to bring it, well, bring it to the, to the regular council meeting, and then you can discuss options of changing the service[1711.21]